Call to order the, uh, got a thing. December 18th, Lake Mills City Council Meeting. Would you all please stand for the Wedge of Legions?
I.
The Wedge of Legions is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call please, when you get a chance. Mr. Fields?
Here.
Mrs. Fritch?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Fritch?
Here.
Ms. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Buckholz?
Here.
All right. Item three, correction and/or approval of the city council minutes of December 4th, 2018. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion? See you then, comfortable? Mr. Fields?
Upsteem.
Mrs. Fritch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion pass four zero. Okay. Item number four, correspondence. Someone in the council wished to share correspondence that they have received. You know, I did receive correspondence by phone today from Tim Campbell, who was here today to speak at public comment, so I will just let him do that at that time and speak for himself instead of my paraphrasing him. So, um, I'm just trying to think. It's been a busy time for everybody and, but I didn't get a lot of calls from people, so, okay. Going on to item number five. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting laws discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the signing sheet provided. Okay. Uh, did you want to start?
Sure.
Okay. And you drove in from Madison?
Uh, I live here at Lake Mills.
Oh, well, very good. Excellent decision.
Yeah, nice to be here. So again, my name's Tim Campbell. I'm a Lake Mills resident. I live at 522 Marguerite Street or Marguerette. I'm still not sure.
And before you sit down, there's a sheet there for you to sign.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. You can do that when you, before you sit down.
Okay, great. Um, I'm also an aquatic invasive species specialist for the University of Wisconsin Extension and the University of Wisconsin Seagrain Institute, and part of my job is to help communities, uh, or help communities provide boaters with the, the best management practices and tools that boaters need to prevent the spread of aquatic invasive species. And a lot of what I've done is try to help communities place these tools at boat launches. And, uh, the Clean Boats, Clean Waters program is part of that, which the city and town have been working together on to implement. That's a great first step. Unfortunately, we can't have inspectors out all the time, so there's other tools we can be providing boaters, anywhere from just rakes and hand tools that you can buy from hardware store to pressure washers to, you know, systems that cost tens of thousands of dollars that you can implement. And a big hangup that I am seeing around the state for implementing these strategies is that it's really cost prohibitive to try to implement these strategies on their own. If you have an existing landing, you want to put in one of these, you know, strategies, it costs a ton of money to try to retrofit your existing landing to make this, you know, your pressure washer or cleaning station work. But if you have the opportunity to redesign your whole boat launch, uh, just adding in design considerations, even to just have the opportunity to put these things at a later date could cost, you know, anywhere from nothing to just a little bit more to make it so that way at some point in time, you could put these, uh, strategies in. So I would just encourage the council to, uh, I guess, consider aquatic invasive species prevention as you're discussing the Sandy Beach Boat Launch Redevelopment. And, um, if you want to learn more about options that are available to you all, uh, I think Diane has my email address and I can follow up with that again. Otherwise Patricia Cicero knows how to get in touch with me. Um, I'd be happy to talk with the council about what options, uh, exist. And then I know, I used to be a member of the Lake Association, well, I still am a member of the Lake Association, used to be on the board. I do know that, uh, the Lake Association would be very interested in helping out, uh, with implementing some of these additional strategies too. So if the council's interested, I'd be happy to work with you to, uh, explore what kind of opportunities are available to you all.
So would I be correct, and you can tell me if I paraphrasing you accurately, that what you're saying is that since we are looking at the Sandy Beach improvements, to keep this in mind, because when we do do the move of, of the piers and stuff or the, uh, launch, that that would be the time to do that? Do we want it cost effective?
Correct. Um, 'cause as you're looking at moving things, it could even just be, uh, as you're thinking about the flow of traffic, um, you're creating extra space to put a pressure washer or cleaning station, um, because most places aren't designing for that in mind, so it's hard to place them there. Or there might be electric, electrical needs, water needs, other power needs that they aren't designing for. So even if you don't put the, the prevention strategy in place right now, um, just having the capabilities for it means in the future you can apply for grant funding or other, you know, sources of support from the state, uh, to put these strategies in place.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
What is it about the life cycle of these invasive species that is causing it to spread that, uh, we need all this kind of equipment to try and prevent it?
I mean, it really depends on the invasive species. I would, in my opinion, as an invasive species specialist, a lot of stuff in Wisconsin is moved, attached to plants on boats. And so, um, it's not zebra mussels attaching to the boats directly themselves. It's, uh, zebra mussels or snails or, uh, other small invertebrates attaching to plants and people moving plants around. So I think really any strategy that could help people remove plants from boats would be really beneficial. But there's also zebra mussel villagers or the larvae that can move in water. Uh, Lake Mendota has the spiny water flea, has the highest concentration of spiny water flea of anywhere in the world. So additional strategies such as, uh, either draining water, uh, like wet backs to remove water or high pressure washes to get things you can't see or remove like mud on boats can also be effective.
Have you had an opportunity to date to meet Rob Getz, our Parks Department?
I have not.
Um, may I just suggest that since you live in town, maybe someday, when it's convenient, and calling, call here first to see if he's available. But come in, introduce yourself to him, because I think he would want to know who you are and what your resources are. Um, and, um, I think it would be a good connection for the two of you to meet each other.
Okay, great. I'll definitely do that.
So, and it's not like you have to do it before Christmas.
Yeah, I might wait until after the new year.
Right, I would recommend you do, but, you know, that since you're in town, I would think you could maybe squeeze that in someday on your workday.
I think I could make it happen.
On your way into Madison, so, okay. Anybody else have something for him? And as I told you before, we're not making any decisions tonight on anything, so, um, do you know that our proceedings are on the internet? If you could watch our thing?
Yep. So I was planning on catching the presentation afterward, or at a future date.
That's what I was going to suggest, you could maybe do it at work while you're eating your lunch or something.
I mean, this seems pretty exciting. I might do it some night over dinner.
But any, so that you understand that, you know, even if you're not here physically for the meeting, you can still hear everything that we say at the meeting just by turning on your computer.
Okay, great. Thanks for that.
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak at this time? We have some other people in the audience. I don't know who, if anybody else would like to speak. So I guess nobody else that isn't already speaking during the program, right? Okay. All right, then we'll close questions and public comment and go on to the city manager's report. Steve, I'll turn it over to you.
Um, there's a check register provided and the PD monthly report. Um, I did want to note that South Main Street contract was awarded December 5th, Pillar The cost breakdown for the city is the general fund would have $652,868.65. Water would have $1,667,621.08. And the sewer wastewater would be $1,257,738.27. All, all lower than budgeted, so we're, we did all right.
How about compared to last year?
Well, last year was way over.
Well, I know that, but was our difference between the two proposals that different? I can't recall.
Yeah, the, the one last year was almost fourteen, was thirteen and a half million dollars. This one this year came in at nine million, 227,000 was the base bid, and then you add in engineering contingencies and it rounded up to about two, uh, 9.8. Uh, so yeah, it was about almost four million dollars less.
It's a big difference.
Our, our estimates, you know, our sewer estimates are almost a million dollars over, so we're a million dollars under our estimate. And our water, or our general fund was pretty much right on, a little bit, um, high, maybe 150, 200,000. Um, but otherwise we did well. Mulberry Street is out for bid and it will open January 18th, 15th. It's a different type of project. Uh, South Main Street was concrete, so La Landi is a concrete specialist, concrete pavement specialist. Uh, we probably won't see them on, um, South, or on Mulberry unless they work as a sub for sidewalks and curb and gutter, which is possible, because it looks like one of the prime contractors bidding as a sub to them. Uh, so we may see them kind of flip flop back and forth, one's prime on South Main, one's We have been in some discussions about development of 1204 South Main Street. Uh, we have a proposal that's somewhere in, um, 1.7 to 2.6 million dollar range. So I guess I'm continuing to work on that, basically trying to work out the TID information. I don't know if you've been watching that closely, but, um, TID number five is a classic TID, um, area, because it's one and a half million dollars lower today than it was the day we implemented it. And for Lake Mills, that's pretty unusual, because most areas on Lake Mills have a, an extremely fast growing assessed value. So for a place to lose one and a half million dollars of assessed value in a couple of years is pretty substantial. So that's, um, something where we'll have to look at that and pay close attention, but you need more than one and a half million dollars to get any increment, so. We think we got all our, well, I know we've got all 40 of our LSL samples, uh, taken, our lead, uh, service samples taken for submission to the DNR. As of date, we do not have any fails. Um, and if you remember, the last quarter, we also had no fails. And so if we get, if this one, we have nine outstanding yet, but if they all pass with no fails or under the percentage we're allowed, we go down to 20, which would be pretty nice. Testing sites. I know the Public Works Board talked about, um, lead service, private lead service lateral grants and loans. Um, and that is a discussion we want to continue to have as part of, uh, the next rate review, because as we, I noted here, there's, um, a pretty substantial amount of water and sewer infrastructure being put in in the next year, because you had three million dollars here, almost 2.7 million dollars worth of, of, uh, water and sewer for South Main Street. You're going to have a pretty substantial amount, almost as much on Mulberry Street. So, um, you're going to have a, a cost there, plus we're painting the water tower, which is another $400,000. So there'll be a rate issue there, and as long as we're looking at it, we want to have the conversations about the, the, um, grants for removal of future lead, um, private lead laterals. And, uh, I know that there was a little bit of wandering conversation at the Public Works Board. It's a public health issue and, and any public health issue is a public welfare issue, which is definitely a government grant. So I, I don't see that as being the authority or not. It's how we handle it, which, between the two groups, I think we can come to an understanding of what needs to be done. Radium, I don't know, if you drove down Franklin Street today, you'll notice it was blocked. They're pumping off well number four again. We went through the cleaning process where we pumped the well full of chlorine and pumped all the material out of it, cleaned it all out. We got our approval from the DNR, so probably next week we'll start our second round of packer tests, which we hope this time passes, because if it doesn't, then we have to start looking at some really expensive options for, um, upgrading well number four. AMI, which is the automatic meters, is still progressing. Cross connections, I guess we have all our reports in and are prepared for our sanitary survey from, uh, DNR for water, so that's good. Uh, we're still in debate with the DNR and EPA about the proper way to run the corrosion They want us to, we figured that using as the, what is it called? The base sample or the, the, the existing sample is we could just use city system. They've decided they didn't want that. They wanted us to have a, a system that runs exactly what the city's currently running out into the system through a test sample on the rack. So we had three phosphate, orthophosphate samples and one.
Silicate.
Silicate sample. Uh, we're probably, if they don't accept that proposal and they force us to go the one route, we'll have to, we'll drop the silic, silica sample. Um, 'cause I would think it would have been a good option anyways. Um, but that, we're still working on that. The new water rate will go into effect, uh, in January. So we just had a new water rate approved, uh, December 15th. We have our 400 class coming up on January 16th and 17th, so I, if you're going. I got the final union, WPPA union negotiation document in today. Riverwood is still moving forward. The construction plans were before, uh, the Public Works Board. Uh, we have the special assessment waiver out with the estimate. The final plat came in today, um, so that'll be on the next Plan Commission meeting, as will the zoning. I think pretty much all our health insurance is done. Few employees need to clean up their information, but other than that, from a city standpoint, we're, we're converted. Arlac has completed all their documents. They have a contractor, they're just waiting for the weather to be right to do the work.
How much of the riff are they going to replace?
All of it.
All of it.
Probably the next big item that we'll have next month is the new Lake Mills High School site plan review. TID number seven was a discussion item on, uh, the Public Works Board, and that's a TID item with the utility infrastructure kind of in flux, but a general concept based on what we've done in the past. So we have a water line that extends up along, you know, Plinar Building, and we have a water line that extends up along the, uh, Gunlock property, right to the edge of the, both of them right to the edge of the interstate. So you're going to have some kind of loop coming off those two lines. But those are conversations there. Um, we're looking at, uh, using an outside company to do our utility billing. And other than that, I'm, you got anything?
Well, I think you covered everything.
Oh, your office sounds like a very busy place, if you ask me. Is it busier than it has been?
No.
Yes?
No.
No, okay.
No, just different.
Just different. Well, and with all the South Main Street and Mulberry Street stuff coming, that added some to it, too.
We've gotten better at dumping it off, too.
Okay.
You know, like Misty just got done with the grant for the, or the tax cab stuff. That's all done now. All the documents are signed. Our audit went really well. I guess we got the cleanest audit they've ever seen.
For 2017?
Yeah, so we've, there are all kinds of things going on.
All that, yes, very busy.
Some of them I just don't keep my hands in as much as I used to. So it gives me, makes me busy in other areas, which distresses Dwayne and Paul.
Okay, well, we compliment your work and the work of the staffs. So thank you for.
I can, I can also tell you, we already had a proposal on the boat wash at Sandy Beach. We, when we went in and talked, we discussed the possibility of including a boat, boat wash in it.
Oh, okay, all right, so that.
That's something that Patricia had brought up, I don't know, four years ago.
Yeah, yeah.
So we had, we had included that as a conversation when we went in for the grant, because I, the way the grant was worded, it would cover those types of facilities.
Okay.
And there are two grants, actually. There's this one and then there's another one to U.S. Fish and Wildlife that we're considering doing, too.
Well, it does sound like it makes sense, uh, to do something to prevent the transmission, transmission of the negative stuff.
Invasive species.
Yeah, it's all kind of plants, animals, the whole thing, you know? It's, uh, trying to keep our, our lake as clean as possible, and, uh, we don't control everybody that goes in and out of our lake, unfortunately, so. Okay, well, that's good. Maybe I'll give Tim a call tomorrow and let him know that, because he might not be aware of that, or do you think his, you think Patricia knows?
Uh, well, we discussed it with Cheryl and, um, Wendy, yeah, Wendy Pike. Um, so I don't, you know, I know that she's pretty close with Sue Graham, but Sue wasn't in that one.
If Tim has some questions, he could give you a call and you could give them.
Yeah, yeah, we can answer all that for him.
Okay, sounds good.
We did, we did close out the bike trail grant today, too, that was submitted, right, Betsy?
Yes, the, not the bike trail.
Oh, no, no, the Mill Pond.
It was the Mill Pond.
Study, yeah.
Yeah, the bike trail is almost ready to be submitted.
So we'll have two grant documents finalized and closed out this, at this month.
And, uh, we'll see those in January, then?
Well, those will be closed out documents. We've received the money, it'll just be the state saying, "Thank you, you, we're done with you."
We don't even have to take action, no?
No, nope, they're all done. Staff closes them out.
I like that kind of stuff, when it's all done with, or we did it before it, so. All right, well, thank you very much, and, uh, that moves us to item, um, eight, no, eight, no, seven.
Seven, yep.
I put my agenda up a little too high there. Item number seven, acceptance of minutes of the Public Works Board of November 13th, 2018. Uh, we've received them and they will be placed on file. And, uh, that moves us to item eight, council business, a discussion on city policy of flags at half staff. I did put that item on the agenda. The current half staff, uh, decision was sent down by the governor, and I believe it was till December 30th was the date, but we had not, our, our, except for the one in front of this building, our flags weren't on half staff, and I was getting phone calls about that. So I put it on the agenda because, uh, I think we need to revisit our current policy on that. Um, Steve, do you want to say anything about it before I say anything more?
Uh, we visited this about what, six years ago? Seven years ago?
Something like that.
Um, we put them down at all official, public buildings where we have flags, so, which is the primary requirement, is to have all your, your, uh, public buildings have flags at half mast. We have a, I don't know, six or seven other flags at places like parks. Generally, what we try and do is, is, uh, flags go up at a certain time and they come down at a certain time. All our, we don't have anybody in to take flags down, um, because most of the time it's at sunset. And a lot of times flags have, go half mast on the weekend or some other time period where it's difficult for us to get there. So what we tried to do is put a control in place where we met the main requirement while still controlling our costs and how often we had to call in employees. And that came, the city council did that, and, uh, it was kind of a recommendation from the Parks Board. So if you want to look at it again and you want to send it to the Parks Board and let them put something together, um, I, you know, if you, if the Legion wants to come in and, uh, take the flags up and down at those other sites, that, that would be a great option, or, you know, if you want to spend the extra money, we can do that. It's just, um, you get, you have primarily two people who do that, because it requires access to all the keys. And, uh, so you're putting, and that happens a lot. I don't know if you realize it, but flags go up and down all the time. And so it, it gets to be quite expensive and a quite a time burden on two people, so, um, if there's an option other than that, it would be great, you know, like the Legion doing it, but I guess we'll have to look at it and see what we got.
Um, the flags that were causing distress to people were the ones in the downtown park, Commons Park. And it's because they're more visible, more people see them. The other thing is, is we have three flag poles in Commons Park. And I guess I'm starting to think if, do we really need three flag poles in Commons Park? Because, you know, that's, that may be something that we want to revisit as well. I understand the one that where we have the memorial service has to stay, because they have to do the flag up and down over by the Commons Park, over by the shelter. But we do have two others, one at the corner and one right across the street from City Hall over here. And I'm thinking that, you know, if, rather than to not do it right, it might be better to do less than not do it right, you know? So, do you think that would, needs to go to the Parks Board?
I'd like them to talk about it first and make a recommendation and come back.
Well, then.
Because Rob is the one who's going to be doing all the work on it.
I did not get complaints from anybody about flags at the other parks. I don't think people were worried about that, but they were distressed by Commons Park being very visible and not being at half mast. Um, and, uh, and then Rob did put them at half mast, and they will stay that way till the 30th. But anyway, so how do we go about getting that sent to public, to the Parks Board?
We'll just move it over if that's what you guys want to do.
Can you take care of getting that?
Yep, I can talk to Vicki and have that added to our agenda.
Okay, and then I can fill you in on some of the comments that will need to be shared with them. Okay, good. Thank you for, for doing that and putting it on the agenda. And I do want to thank the public who cared enough to call about it, because it shows us that our citizenry, our, you know, patriotic and, um, you know, and care. So thank you for those people. All right. All right, item number B, eight B, discussion on city of Lake Mills branding initiative. Okay. You have in your packet the proposal regarding the branding. And it was my understanding, Steve, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that one of the reasons you needed us to move on this is because of the painting of the water tower. Okay. I am going to pass the gavel to Mike, so that at some point here I could speak to this as a council member, rather than as the City Council President. So I'm gonna do that right now, and I'll turn the meeting over to you until we're done with this.
Till we're done with it, all right. So, yeah, I know we talked about this and about bringing this in as an initiative. What, I, I guess we'll let you start us off, Steve, with your thoughts on this.
Well, last year, we, we started the process, and I don't know if you remember, but as part of the strategic plan, we looked a lot at, at branding and branding strategies. And we talked about it, and it kind of got dropped until now. And we've held off on the water tower as long as we can. We've got to do something with it. And that was one of the primary areas where you're looking at. Seeing Jefferson and Fort and Watertown and Johnson Creek and the school district and the chamber and Main Street do theirs, so, in the time that we've talked about doing ours. I tried to move it forward again, look at what we could do. Talked a long time about having a simple, base branding item logo that we can put on all our documents. And then, you know, so it's, you're gonna have the logo in Lake Mills Fire Department or Lake Mills Police Department or Lake Mills Administration. And it just kind of transfers through all the documents. And something we can put on that people recognize. I mean, I just got done doing Thrives, too, so. It's something that's become very common for, for branding or making sure that people recognize what belongs to the city.
So this proposal, I'm looking to, I've looked through it, and I'm looking through it. They're actually gonna present designs, and it's not gonna be as much of a collaborative effort. And the other, I'm sorry, the other piece would be, I was hoping they would look at something for the seal.
Well, the seal can be done in the same way. You can kind of drop a simple logo onto the seal. The, this is, is pretty, actually, it's pretty expansive. They come in and they help work. They, they give you some ideas and they help work you through the process as a council and a staff. Then they go through two public hearings. And they also are willing to do like focus groups and specialty groups and those types of things. So they'd meet with like Main Street and the chamber and all the other ones.
So when this is all said and done, or if we go through with all this, we actually own all the rights?
Yes, it's our logo.
Whatever...
Right, it's our branding, documents and our logos. The... I've seen some of them go through some pretty long iterations. I wouldn't recommend going through as full as this recommends.
Yeah.
You know, you, you make it too difficult, and it's hard to come to a good consensus. Generally, if you start out with, you know, five, seven ideas, and you work down from there...
I was gonna say three.
And then, you know, we kind of come to a consensus, and we put it to, put it out to the public and let them work it over for a while, and then we get it back and we finalize it. That's probably gonna be as good as any process that we can go through. This one is kind of much more extensive than that.
It is, yeah.
So...
So one question popped in my head as I was reading this the other day was, what, what do we have for current stock if we're looking at doing letterhead and stuff like that? Do we have an extensive stockpile of that, that we'd have to use up first?
From city administration end, probably not. We have stock, but not extensive. And police and the fire department probably have more stock that they would have to use up. They would probably then change the logos on their cars, but they would probably do that as they change out.
Yeah.
So it's not, I don't, I don't see that as being a significant issue. You know, we're not gonna go through and, like corporations do, and throw everything out and start over again. We're just gonna continue to use it until we're done and, and have the new one ready to put in place.
Right. Okay.
Do you have a... Sorry?
No, go ahead.
Do you have a fund in mind that's going to be paying for this? Or is this coming from the city's, the council's contingency fund?
That's where it was approved from last year, so I just, so that's where we...
So we don't have like a community development part of the budget or anything?
I do, but it's all spent already.
Oh.
Our community development goes to J.C., E.D.C., the chamber and Main Street.
Okay.
Diane?
I asked to be separated from this so that I could speak on it. One thing that I wanted to mention is, I think the painting of the water tower can be separated from the branding process. Because our current water tower is not well seen like the one in Johnson Creek. You don't see it when you're going down the interstate. You see it from Highway B and Harvey Road, and that's, and then a few, you know. And I don't personally, and this is why I asked to be separated. I personally do not think that we need anything else on our water tower except the script letters, Lake Mills. I don't know why we need to spend that amount of money, that it will cost and the work and the time and everything, to put colored paint up there for that, just to let people know that we were really special. Because I think we're really special without that. And one thing, though, I think down the road, when we start development down the road on the north side of the interstate, there will be a water tower over there, will there not?
Eventually.
Eventually, I know it, it's a ways away. Now, that, I think, would be a time where you might want to do what we're talking about here. And that is where I think you would want to put money to make it a really cool water tower, because everybody will see that one. But, well, if they won't, we're gonna hide it?
No, no, it's gonna be way, it's gonna be way up on the north side, back...
Okay, well, then we don't have to do it at all. Okay, well, anyway, I really think that our current water tower with script letters, that say Lake Mills, is adequate and fine. I have no problem with the branding process. I think it's fine. I agree, we should do it and, and do a good job on it. But I don't think our water tower has to have that. So I'm just, that's my personal thing. And I, I'm sure after talking tonight, I'll hear from people about my opinion.
The one thing that I, you need to understand is, we're gonna have a minimum of two colors anyways.
Yeah, but two colors, well...
And then we would pick two colors that would be consistent with the colors that are gonna be in the logo anyway. So you might have one more color.
And maybe we could, maybe we could decide on that second color relatively easily. I mean, a lake is blue, and Tree City America is green. So I'd say one of those two colors is the color. You know, I don't think we have to go through, finish the whole process to do the water tower, is my...
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, is that you, you have to have two colors anyways. The third color isn't a substantial change in the overall cost of the project. You can get more cost in the project from putting hand railing on the top.
Well, we decided we needed that.
I don't know, I can see the water tower from some pretty substantial areas when I come into the city, not from the east, but from the west. So I mean, it's, it's there. But yeah, I, we still have to have two colors that are gonna be involved in the water tower painting. It won't be just, it won't be the existing colors. It'll probably be a...
Black, black lettering?
It'll, probably might be a dark blue and a light blue or a green and a, one of the colors has to be dark.
Yeah. I was thinking black, because it shows up the best.
I don't think they like black. They prefer some, has to do with the way the water tower reacts.
Oh, you mean the painters?
What?
The painters?
Yeah, no, the engineers.
Oh, the engineers.
Yeah, they, it's a pretty scientific process of painting a water tower. You're measuring mills, and you're, you're doing all kinds of water, paint has to be very special. And, you know, there has to be cathartic protection on the water tower. It has to go through that process. And then you also paint the inside. So there are all kinds of things that go on through, through the process. I just...
Well, and maybe we need to get that information from the people who paint water towers before we even go through the rest of the process. Because if there are a couple of colors that work and hold up better on water towers, let's use them. I, I think, you know, let's save money and make it the best we can make it for the least cost. But anyway, so that's my two cents worth on that. And I have had people who have heard that we were doing this branding. And I think you alluded to something with it, kind of asking why, since we have a high percentage of artistic people in Lake Mills, why we aren't looking into getting input from those people. But I think you sounded like we might do that, but anyway, that's...
Yes, we'll get input from the public. I, I want it to be a little bit less than, well, I want it to be significantly less than what Jefferson ended up with. I want a, a simple corporate logo. I don't want it to get really fancy, really detailed, a lot of colors. I just want it very basic. And it tends to, when you let it get out into too many people, they start throwing too many things in and too much color and too many variations. And you just, you can't narrow it down.
But maybe we could start by saying, when we give it to people, you get to use three colors, and it has to include the colors that the paint people say it should be, you know. I mean, we can eliminate some of the fluff right at the beginning, you know. But anyway, I wanted to bring that up so that it was brought up. And I, I just think, I want to mention that I really like the school district's logo. There, I think it's well done. Was that done by Cream City?
I do not know. I didn't ask.
I believe so.
I thought it was, but I'm not positive, but I thought it was. I thought, I think that is a particularly attractive logo, and I think it really speaks to the whole thing. I'd like to see us do something like that. And I think that's only a few colors.
Yes, it's only three.
So that's, that's, that's what I would be hoping, that we would have something similar, but not the same, but on the same line.
Yeah, it, it was a nice design, and, and it was in the materials that Cream City had handed out last year. So that's why I think they were instrumental in doing it.
I thought that was, I, I know I saw that, too, but it wasn't, I never really asked specifically. But anyway, I think we could do something equally well done. But I think we should get that information from painters for the water tower right now. And then start with that information.
It would be nice to know what we think it would cost to add the extra colors, if it is really a significant cost. I know that, you know, if they're setting up and we decide we want to do it anyway, do it all at the same time, and that's what your thought was. That way, they don't have to come back if we decide later we want to add it on there. And I do like some of the ideas that Diane had there, but it all depends on how well we can time this. It would be awesome if we were able to set some parameters and do some like little contest or something for citizens, to be able to put some stuff in there. Maybe not even a contest, just, you know...
Just share...
Share their thoughts.
Yeah, anyway.
Yeah, that, that's included.
Yeah, yeah.
We did that. I don't have, I think that's a good idea and a great, I just, I want to keep the process relatively simple.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
So there was no decisions on this?
No.
Just the discussion, so...
When do we need to make a decision on this to be in a timeline that works for the water tower?
Well, if we can come to an agreement on colors...
Okay.
We can probably go out quite a ways. The colors are the important part, because it's already built into the design specs as to having a three-color logo painted on the water tower.
Preferred colors from the, from the engineers, stuff that we can pick from.
Weren't we going to meet with them, the consultant, on the last meeting in January?
That fifth Tuesday?
Yes, that's the branding consultant, yep.
So would that be an appropriate time to start talking about colors at the same time? Okay.
Okay.
I'm happy with that.
Yeah, good. Okay, so then I'm gonna pass the gavel back.
Okay, thank you for conducting the meeting for us. So, I didn't even get to hit the gavel.
I know it.
All right. So moving on to item C, discussion decision on John's disposal contract amendment currently tabled. Well, first of all, we have to get it off the table. Does somebody want to make a motion to remove it from the table?
I'll make a motion to remove it from the table.
Second?
Is there a number on it?
I'm trying to get back to it, so don't ask me.
Eighteen, eighteen twelve two one.
Let's see, okay. I love computers, but I'm really slow. Okay, all right, so we're looking at taking that motion and the second, right, Steve? Okay. And that's not discussable, is it? Or can we discuss whether we want to take it off the table? Can you discuss that, Diane?
I don't think so.
So, okay, then would you please call the rule on taking it off the table?
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero?
Okay, so the motion eighteen twelve two one is currently on the table. Now, do you want to read the title for that?
City Council motion eighteen dash twelve dash two dash one, authorizing the city manager to sign a contract amendment.
Okay. We have another item on this, don't we, with the changes?
There's the last item on the agenda prior to the discussion regarding Sandy Beaches and ordinance that reflects the proposed changes.
We don't need to do those in connection. All right, so anybody wish to make a motion to approve this item?
I'll move adoption of motion eighteen twelve two one.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this motion? I thought our discussion last meeting with Johns was good.
It went well.
Had a lot of good questions, and I think we all learned some things from it, so. Seeing no other discussion?
Well, it should probably be added, since that point, this was put in front of the Board of Public Works. And they have a motion to approve the, or recommended, recommended that you approve the motion.
Thank you for bringing that up. I forgot that. So, yes, and, and that they had nothing that we needed to know on this part of the thing to change?
No, not from my recollection.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna call the rule.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero?
Okay, and then we will revisit that again down to item G, so. All right, moving on to item D. Discussion decision on the sale of approximately nineteen square feet of parcel number that you are going to read that out, located on Tower Street. Would you please read that, actually?
There is no motion.
Well, read that-
This one is kind of a...
Okay.
I guess we'll see where it takes this type of deal.
Okay. Okay.
We have discussed this before, though, haven't we?
We... I had mentioned it before.
Yeah.
Um, talked about the fact that, uh, Steve Holman was leveling the site and had, uh... Kind of was in the process of removing the two western pillars, which are about, let me say, forty-five thousand cubic yards of concrete piece. And it... This is kind of a long, convoluted story. But the proposal that was in the, um, on the packet, was a CSM that was provided. Uh, and this property right here is owned by Noah Kopp. And he wants to get a little bit of this lot here in order to be able to expand his garage. Um, and then Steve wanted to... Originally, he tried to sell us this part and he said no. And so now he wanted to say, okay, well, can I buy some of this lot? And I was like, yeah, I... I think that we're at the position now, since we decided not to purchase your lot, that putting a water tower there, our review was is that putting a water tower there wasn't in our best interest. We did think that we wanted to cul-de-sac, the opportunity to build a cul-de-sac at the end. Well, as they did the CSM, that lot that Steve was getting in this location right here, that cul-de-sac was cutting into it and making the setback for the house. Uh, making the lot unbuildable because he couldn't get the setbacks he needed. So he came back with this proposal, which was kind of something he was mulling anyways because he owns all these lots. He owns from here all the way up to here.
That's a piece I didn't realize.
And so he's tearing this house down and he's re... He's changing the lot lines here somewhat. And so being able to... He felt that this house was going to be setting up here like this and having a cul-de-sac here would be a better option for him. But then what he proposed was he'd buy this lot and, um... As part of the whole process. Um, so that there would be a CSM down here that would do a slight change of the lot line. Uh, then he'd have these two lots to be able to build homes on. And then he'd have these two lots to be able to build homes on. And then his mother's house would be in the middle there. And he'd kind of clean up the lot lines and the setbacks on that house. Uh, and I... I don't have any problem with it. I... I think it's probably the highest and best use for that land up there now. Um, the cul-de-sac is unusually small. Um, so we're gonna kind of work on that to make sure that we can turn a fire truck on that cul-de-sac, similar to what we did on North Shore. Obviously, it's better than what we have right now because it's just a dead end right now. Um, but to get four new houses up there and have a nice cul-de-sac would be an option. Um, the question is, are you willing to sell that property to him in order to make this work? Um, he'll get his, uh, surveyor moving on, putting the appropriate documents together. Um, the price of the... The value of this lot, if it were buildable, would be about thirty-four thousand, thirty-five thousand dollars. The problem is, is that with five of those huge pillars in there and a bunch of water main and then the structures that went along with it, there's about, you know, maybe ten, fifteen thousand dollars worth of work to clean it up. So what we're gonna try and do in the process is figure out what the value is and then how we... You know, what we bill him in exchange because there are a couple of other items there that are gonna be involved in the process of making... You know, like, if he builds this cul-de-sac, he's not really required to as part of a CSM. But if he built that cul-de-sac, we might give him some credit for that and several other items in there. Um, so we'll try and sit down and work that out and have it ready if you guys are interested in doing that.
Is he dedicating that part of the cul-de-sac?
Yes, it'll be dedicated. It'll be public right away there. And that'll be... Of course, the cul-de-sac for snow plowing makes it easier because we can get a snow plow in there and if... Also with the fire trucks, it'll make it easier to handle the fire trucks and those types of things. But we want to make sure that they... They meet the requirements. I mean, it's better than a dead end, but, um, if you're gonna do it, do it right.
Yeah, it sure is hard to turn a school bus down there.
Yeah. Yeah, we've been through that, haven't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, this would make that a lot easier too, so, um... And, you know, you take a piece of property, you've got three vacant lots in a property that has almost no value, but that house on the end. And putting in four new houses, that adds a lot of increment to be able to pay for the street. So it's a benefit, I think. I just want to make sure that you understand that working with Steve, we end up with a lot of unusual issues.
So will they be non-conforming?
The lots?
Yeah.
No, all the lots will be conforming. Yeah, he's a... He's R one six there, so the lots can be seventy-two hundred square feet. And, uh, all the lots there, eight thousand square feet or bigger.
Sounds fine. So he wouldn't be involved on this?
No. Yeah, it wouldn't have to go to planning commission. It's a CSM, so that staff-
He's not changing any zoning or anything?
No.
So it wouldn't be a problem? Oh, okay.
We just have to be careful that we have full disclosure to everybody so that it doesn't look like we're cutting a special deal for a staff or-
Because of the cul-de-sac involved, does that go to the Public Works Board?
Uh, it could. I don't know that it needs to, but it could. I don't have any problem either way. I mean, it's a cul-de-sac on the end of a street is just a-
But they have a good group of people on that board who sometimes think of things that we miss simply because they focus on it when we're focusing on everything in the world here. So I would like to see it go to planning commission. I mean-
Public Works Board.
Thank you, sorry.
And we have no other plans for that?
No, I think it's-
Were you thinking of making it into a park at one time?
No, I didn't think of that. Uh, the only option we had left, once we did... We decided it probably wasn't going to be a water tower, is if we kept it, it was going to be a park. But if you remember, um, those pedestals, those concrete pedestals stuck five feet out of the ground and the slope on that property was really substantial. I mean, it was... It wasn't four to one. It might have... It was much deeper than that. Um, so usable as a park would have been. Now, within leveling it off, it's probably a lot better, a lot more usable. But at this point in time, uh, selling it for a house is probably better because right off the edge of that is the school.
So with the lots, the lots then would have to be terraced, wouldn't they?
No, not really. Uh, the one... You have to remember, he's coming and leveled it out. So now the... Those concrete pedestals that stuck five feet out of the ground before, they're now totally out of the ground.
Oh.
Uh, so the lot, well, it slopes to the east. Um, north and south, it's pretty flat. So it's not too bad. I would imagine that it might have a walkout basement to the east, or to the west. But, you know, I'm not paying a lot of attention to that. I'm more looking at, if you're interested in selling, we'll make a... We'll figure out how to make the deal work.
Shouldn't we have a formal purchase agreement?
Yes.
We're not at that point.
Okay. So the decision you're looking for tonight is what?
Are you willing to sell the lot?
But without the details that we would have with a purchase agreement?
Right, we'll come back. We'll come back with the details and ask again. But if it's like, no, we're not selling the lot, then we might go through all the work of-
Right, yeah. So what we would be approving tonight would be just the general concept and then send it to the Public Works Board for their input while you guys work out more of the details.
I have one question, concern. That land in this lower right-hand corner is the land that was just decided by referendum to no longer be a football field. And that's a pretty steep incline there. Should we be... I don't know what the word is I want, but should we be talking with the school district as we do this to make sure that what they do doesn't affect what we're doing? And then eventually, you know, that the... We put in a cul-de-sac and then the whole thing slides down the hill? You know, because that is really a... It... I just wondered if we should look at that. You know, would we do that normally?
Well, we would definitely do soil samples to make sure that the condition was there. But, I mean, the road's been there for a long time, right out to the edge of the hill.
You know, just... But if they were to start doing something over there or choose to do something and then it affects the undercuttings of our project, I'm just thinking maybe we should make sure they know what we're talking about.
Sure, I'll do that. I know that their plan now is to use it for a playground area.
Okay, well, whatever. I just think, just talk to them. Make sure they know what we're doing so that they don't say, oh, my gosh, we were gonna do this. So, okay, okay. I don't have a problem with selling it.
I don't see any reason to hold on to it.
I think it makes more-
Makes sense.
Puts houses on the tax rolls, which is good. So I'd say, yep, bring that back to us after you've talked with the school board.
Are you gonna do it by motion or just consensus?
Well, I'm not gonna move anything until I see what I'm moving.
Well, I would just do it by consensus.
Yeah, let's do it by consensus.
So, okay. Is that all you need on that then? Or did you really... Did you want something more than that?
No, no, that's fine.
You're okay with what we just said? Okay, good. All right, let's-
There's plenty of evidence that you gave me direction.
Okay, it takes us to item A B. Um, Resolution Eighteen Fifty Five.
It's currently tabled.
It's currently tabled. So number one, is it the recommendation of council to take it off the table tonight? Or is it recommended to leave it at the table?
Of staff. Recommendation of staff to take it off the table?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Um, there's... It's timely, yes. I think that, um, we've received the opinion of our insurer and, um, it's appropriate to take action. You can wait if you'd like. I personally don't see the reason to.
I make a motion to remove Resolution Eighteen Fifty Five from the table.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Would you please call the rule?
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero?
Okay, so would you read Resolution Eighteen Fifty Five, please?
Resolution Eighteen Dash Fifty Five. Action on Notice of Claim and Claim for Damages brought by Gwen M. Perner King, owner of the hair salon located at three sixteen Grove Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
Okay, do I have any emotion on this?
I'm just trying to see exactly what it... I'll make, uh, a move, adoption of Resolution Eighteen Fifty Five.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. And any discussion?
No, this is actually... It disallows... For the affirmative is a disallowing of this based on our information from the insurance company and subsequent information from the claimant.
Okay, any no discussion? Call the rule.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch? No. Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four one.
Resolution, uh, item F. Resolution Eighteen Fifty Eight. Would you please read that for us?
Resolution Eighteen Dash Fifty Eight. Action on Notice of Claim and Claim for Damages brought by Frontier Communications against the city of Lake Mills.
I'm still waiting for... There it came on, okay. Um, so do we have a motion for Resolution Eighteen Fifty Eight?
I move adoption of Resolution Eighteen Fifty Eight.
Second.
And a second? Yeah, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item?
This also disallows-
Yes, this disallows in the affirmative. So this is... Yeah, this is basically Frontier claiming that peeper damaged their, uh... Sorry.
Their underground cable.
Their underground... Yeah, their underground copper as... As they were engaged in work for us as a contractor for the city of Lake Mills.
I know I was absent at the last meeting, but was there any new information that came forward on this at all or?
No, none whatsoever. After the last meeting, I did discuss the claims specifically with MP Systems with Peeperline. And, um, they are not bugging on their... On their... The issue of liability in what happened. They believe that Frontier, the claimant, has not proven their claim. Um, they will not pay out the claim based on just the claim being presented. Uh, they spurred me to advise you to disallow it in accordance with our recommendation from our insurer to basically spur Frontier to sue if necessary. If they believe they have a valid claim, that that's the appropriate form to address the claim at this point.
So I do have a motion and a second unless there's more discussion. Call the question. Call the rule.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero?
Okay, moving on to item G. Now we're at the ordinance that I tried to act on before. Uh, eleven ninety-nine. Let's move back down. Okay, would you read that, please? And would you read it as to include the changes?
Just the changes, okay. Steve, if you want to put that up, those are the changes as well for the public to see. Uh, the ordinance eleven ninety-nine, Amendment Solid Waste Collection and Disposal Regulations. Section one, five fifty-six dash nineteen, Collection and Disposal Regulations. Letter C, Bulky Pickup Service. Items not placed in the carts furnished by the contractor for garbage and recycle service may be picked up at curbside by the contractor. Such bulk pickup service shall be scheduled by the owner or occupant of property by contacting the contractor and verifying a date for such bulk pickup service. It then strikes letters H, I, and J, which relatters the remaining paragraphs. And there's another change then in the new letter H, which now reads, the collection of materials not included in the city contract may be obtained through private contracts of the responsible person's choosing. Section two, all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent with or contravening the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section three, adoption of this ordinance amendment has been recommended by the Board of Public Works. Section four, this ordinance was sponsored by Council Representative Vicky Schmidt. Section five, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and publication as provided by law.
Um, Vicky, you're fine with what we just read? Is it being adequate?
Yes, given that it's the first-
Yes, given that it's the first reading, maybe if Dan would like to just give us a summary of, of what it is we're trying to accomplish.
So, the city of Lake Mills currently enjoys a bulk pickup service that occurs by John's disposal once per month on the third Monday of the month. The previous contract amendment changed the service that John's, John's is going to provide to the city in that now residents or occupants of residences are required to schedule that bulk pickup. Each individual resident or the, I guess, it's associated with an address. So each address would have the privilege of, of receiving one bulk pickup on a scheduled basis per month with additional bulk pickups on a scheduled basis per month costing money. The one bulk pickup that everyone's afforded is a free service that's incorporated into our contract with John's. And this ordinance amendment, it basically provides for the framework of the new service that the city is going to or that the city has just agreed to by amendment of the contract with John's. The one thing that I think is a little bit odd here is that we're removing the penalties that are associated with the former service that has been provided to the city in that there's no longer a designation that stuff left out or stuff put out for bulk pickup prior to Saturday of the morning, prior to the Monday of pickup. There, there used to be in ordinance regulations that stated that fact. If it was put out, if the bulk stuff was put out prior to that Saturday, it constituted, constituted a nuisance. In the city, you could receive a ticket or some other form of citation that you would be liable for as the individual that put that, that stuff out. Also, there's similar clauses with regard to regular service for trash pickup in that if the carts were left out for days after the actual service occurred, that that could be considered a nuisance. Those have been stricken from the ordinance at this point. Staff believes that we just don't know how this new service is going to be performed. It's a little difficult to put timelines on a service that you're scheduling out. John says that they'll be very responsive and in the city of Lake Mills on a weekly basis during the non-winter months. And then during the winter months, it may be every ten days or something like that. Residents, residents will receive a specific date and time that the bulk service pickup is supposed to occur. However, jiving that with the current ordinance and the restrictions that were put in place were pretty difficult. So, the suggestion was made that perhaps we just move into the new service, scheduled bulk service pickup, and then react to that in the future if there are problems with regard to people leaving, you know, bulk objects out too early or too long before the scheduled pickup and reacting from that point in that complaints will basically drive that mechanism. It's a little bit difficult from my perspective to remove such a penalty because enforcement of this issue then gets a little bit muddy. But I think in this circumstance, it's advisable because we just don't know, we don't have the practical experience with the service that is to be provided. And we're just not exactly sure how it's going to work once we actually initiate it.
Did you talk at all about, suppose that I've got a pickup scheduled on a certain day, but it's, there's a blizzard that rolls in?
That's exactly the concern, especially during the winter months, they don't anticipate, John's does not anticipate that they will be here as frequently in the winter months as they will during the summer months. So, yes, you schedule your exact time. I will be there to pick this up on Thursday. If there's some major weather event on Wednesday night, I'd imagine that simply doesn't happen and that it will be pushed to the next time that they're through town. I would expect, based on our conversations, that the next time they're through town will be as soon as possible thereafter. It won't go ten days from that date, but that's, that's exactly the issue. We don't know exactly how that's going to work at this point.
So what, what you're looking for in this is flexibility?
A little bit, but at the same time, John's has stated and restated that they are going to provide a very distinct time, a very distinct date that scheduled pickups will occur. Residents, call up John's, schedule a pickup, and they will be there on that date, absent some act of God or weather that. I don't know, I've been around here a few years. When has John not picked up the garbage?
Never.
They've picked it up every single time. The, right now, we have a problem with people leaving their garbage cans in the street, which is a public safety hazard. If we don't have some way to enforce that. And we have all kinds of codes where we have enforcement. If there's some reason not to enforce it, we don't. But if we need it, it's there. I don't, I don't get why we don't put something in there to enforce. Because then we gotta, you know, I already have been on Facebook and seen how many people say, they're junking all over the city all the time as it is. I, I think you need to have some kind of enforcement mechanism in there to make it happen. I don't think it's a good idea not to.
Do we use our current enforcement very frequently?
Generally, if you tell them that there's an issue and that we can enforce it, they take care of it.
In other words, it's more the threat?
It's the threat, yeah.
Okay.
Once in a while, we've, we've had to go a little bit farther, but I don't ever think we've issued a citation that I know of.
If you don't clean your room, you're in big trouble.
There's some of them where, you know, where they've left it out and they've moved. You know, that was historically the one we had was, is they're not gonna come through for the bulk pickup until the third weekend. It's the first weekend, so they just throw everything out on the curb and they've moved and there's no way to enforce it anymore. In this case, if you are moving and you can call and set a date, even if you've moved, they should be there within seven days. It's not gonna be out there for a long period of time. So I, you would think the, the amount of junk that's laying around the city would get better, but you still need some level of ability to say, hey, there's an enforcement mechanism here and we're gonna use it, particularly on the other nuisances that occurs, which the, the one that I see right now that's getting to be relatively prevalent is them putting their garbage cans in the street.
We have a provision in this ordinance for that. The, the things that were struck
Specifically.
Were just for the bulk pickup.
Just pile bulk.
Yeah, and the problem there is that if you don't know the timeframe, how do you tell people, well, so many days before, you have, you have that window to put it out there, but we don't know when that window is going to be, so how do you tell people? Well, I suppose you could say.
You have an idea of how many hours it is, so if it's forty-eight hours and it's not gone in forty-eight hours, you can contact John's and find out. John said they will give them the day that they're gonna pick it up. So if, if you're saying two days before and it's out there forty-eight hours and all, or seventy-two hours or whatever it is, most of the time, we don't spend a lot of time running around looking at garbage, but after a while, you know, people start calling. That's generally when we find out.
This is the first reading. We, we could think about perhaps massaging old paragraph I to, to put like maybe forty-eight or seventy-two hours prior to the pickup time is the earliest that you can put it out there. It's gonna be hard to enforce because you're not gonna know what the pickup time is, but you could call John's and, you know, if it's been there for three weeks, then there's a problem and.
And the other, the other side to that statement is that if it's been there for three weeks, I believe it already is categorized as a nuisance at that point, regardless of if there's an enforcement mechanism within this specific ordinance. I agree with Steve. I think that adding a timeframe for, you know, setting stuff out there prior to pickup is appropriate. Judging that at this point, for me, is, is, you know, I, I'm not going to be the one to do it. But right now, the ordinance is in front of you and you absolutely can and perhaps should amend it. But we've got time.
Right.
Right. I'm just wondering if, if we do need something, is there anything we really can do? If somebody's moving out, they put their stuff up, out, but they don't call to get it picked up. They aren't gonna pick it up because they never made the phone call. But if neighbors call us, would they, they call us, is that what they call or do they?
They always call us if, if there's something out there, generally unusually a long time.
Can we call John's and say, this resident has moved out, would you please pick it up? Can we make that call?
Yeah, we do that all the time.
All right, there you go. It shouldn't be three weeks for anybody. It shouldn't be, unless nobody tells us there's a problem. And I think sometimes people don't, but let us know. They do it anyway, right Steve? And that's good. Okay, so this is first reading. We have a few changes. And then we'll see it in the, there is no first meeting in January, so we'll see this at the third Tuesday in January as the second reading. Do we need any rush on this? No, okay, so is that all right? And they'll bring it back with the changes we did discuss.
Well, I don't know that we've necessarily established a recommendation for any changes at this.
No, we haven't.
We got time. Okay, we'll get it.
Okay, all right, I thought we did. Right, then moving on, on our agenda. That takes us to item H, discussion of Sandy Beach recreational boat launch grant. And just for clarification, this is a discussion item only. We're not ready yet and our boat launch grant isn't due until like June, something like that? At least later in two thousand.
June first, isn't it?
For the one grant, for the, yeah, I'll talk about that.
Yeah, there are two grants. And it takes a, there's a certain amount of, quite a bit of documentation that has to be put together for the grant. So you wanna give yourself some lead time and.
Right. I do wanna clarify, we are talking pretty much just about the boat launch tonight, right? Okay, we're not talking about the whole Sandy Beach thing. And I brought that up because I knew you had talked about trailers. We're not gonna be talking about the trailer courts tonight, or will we?
Is it broad enough? I mean, I, I can give a lot more information than, than what's out there, but I wanna make sure that the agenda item is broad enough. I think it's pretty narrow.
It looks pretty narrow to me.
Okay, and just.
If you just ask me afterwards and I'll, then, you know, I can put it into the, we're gonna video. I shouldn't talk about that yet, but planning on videoing the, doing a video city, city chat and I can answer those questions for you on that and put it on the web.
Oh, yes, and it's good you mentioned that because we were talking about, we never did talk about that. Uh-oh, because we have a city chat scheduled that, that we probably should cancel at this point.
Yeah, I talked to, well, at the end, we'll talk about.
Okay, good, we'll talk about that on the, on the recommendation for future agendas. But going back to my question tonight, was it the last meeting or the meeting before when we? The meeting that I had put on, we talked about Sandy Beach the last time. We did make a statement then that the work at the trailer court would not be until which time year period?
Well, let's, everything, everything's in the future budget. So like, one, the soonest would be twenty twenty and then twenty twenty-one. One of the phases for the trailer park, I think, was, was twenty-two and one was twenty-three.
Okay, so there's nothing on tap for the trailer park in nineteen or twenty?
Right.
Okay, for the two of you?
Or twenty.
All right, so there's nothing, and nothing we discussed tonight is going to affect any change in that because we're, we're going to be aiming at the boat launch grant. The boat launch changes, so, but you're welcome to stay, but I don't wanna keep you up.
We're just in boat launch too, so.
Okay, good, okay, just don't wanna keep you up.
We are for a lift.
Okay, wonderful, that's good. And thanks for coming, by the way. Okay, so I'm sorry, you would like to introduce yourself and?
Yes, I'm Brandon Herbert from Strand. We're the Cities Consulting Engineer. And I've been working with staff in the city on the Sandy Beach redevelopment in heavy conjunction with Mead and Hunt as well for a while now. So, I'm here to talk about the Sandy Beach Boat Launch Redevelopment. I put together a little presentation just to kinda summarize what the grant might all entail. But before we dive into the grant, and I know that the council has talked about this quite a bit. There are people from the public here and probably people watching this on the internet at some point too. So I thought it might be important to just kinda recap real quick what the existing site is so that you can kinda see why are we even talking about redeveloping it. So the first couple of slides that I have, the first one here is just kind of a summary of the existing site. This boat launch, you can kinda see right in the middle of the park. It kinda creates a, you know, half and half feel to the beach. And then the area that is being considered for the new boat launch is the area shown by the four volleyball courts, kind of on the left side of the slide there. It's, you know, the volleyball courts, some grass, and then a little bit of beach and then the sunny pier is kinda the area where the, the boat launch is being proposed. The existing boat launch, I've got a few pictures here that show the entrance to the site on the top left. The boat, boat launch patrons have to drive past the gatehouse there on the right. It's a little narrow. I also think that it's worthy to point out that that's also the gatehouse where pedestrians are supposed to pay the park entry fee. And so it kinda creates a, a good mesh of, of people and then vehicles and boat trailers at that spot. And then on the top right, that's as you pull in a little bit farther, you can kinda see that it's, it enters a loop. It's not very wide. There's very little space for any sort of boat, vehicle and boat trailer queuing. You might be able to fit one or two in there, but mostly people are probably gonna be waiting out in the parking lot for somebody to be done. And then, then the bottom there, that's the existing ramp. You can see it's a single ramp. It's bordered on both sides by concrete walkways. It's again, not, not very wide. I've personally seen people drive their boat trailer wheels up on those concrete walkways for a distance and it wouldn't be hard to do. And I've got a few more pictures here. You can kinda see the, the half and half split here that on the west side of the existing boat launch is the main, main beach, the main swimming area, most popular from my experience being there. And then on the, on the right or the east hand, east side of the boat launch is kind of like a grass area, another beach and swimming area. Maybe some non-motorized boat use over there and then some kind, there's quite a few picnic tables over there too. So, you can kinda see that it splits the beach, it splits pedestrian use of the area. And, you know, in my opinion and others as well, it kinda creates a safety hazard where you're, you're telling people pulling trailers, you know, vision with trailers and backing and things like that's always a little bit difficult on its own. But now when you, you mix in a very popular beach and when people trying to kinda traverse across the boat launch, it's, it's not the best situation. And so what we're looking to do is remedy that, both the, the traffic, the pedestrian, the vehicle, trailer flow issue. But then also the launch itself here, I've got a couple of pictures where you can kinda see that the concrete terminates pretty much right at the water's edge. And then beyond that, in the bottom picture, you can see it's just sand. That's very typical for, I guess, a reconstructed launch. Typically, the concrete goes down into the water quite a ways. And I was recently at a Joint Rock Lake Committee meeting where a gentleman attended the meeting and kinda petitioned them to do something about the launch because he was having trouble getting stuck in the sand and when he, that the wheels went off the end of the concrete. You know, typically that concrete will extend into the water to, you know, say four feet of depth or something like that so that, a depth that you can float a decent sized boat off a trailer. And so those are kinda the main concerns or issues with the existing boat launch that the new boat launch could remedy. On top of being step one of the redevelopment of the Sandy Beach area as a whole. So there, I've got a slide here that shows kinda the proposed improvements, just a larger overview of the boat launch area on the bottom right there. Again, is step one or section one A, and these exhibits are coming from the Mead and Hunt Sandy Beach redevelopment report. They were, they provided, I think it was at the end of two thousand seventeen, and then they did a really nicely done, in my opinion, presentation to council in January of this year on a lot of this stuff, so this is kinda rehashing some of that. But section one A there, that's the first step because it pulls the boat launch out of the center of the site and kind of opens the space for the furthest development of the, of the area. Because it pulls the boat launch out of the center of the site and kind of opens the space for the furthest development of the, of the area. This is a more of a zoomed in view about what's being proposed. And this is the general concept that we would use to pursue the grants with. This concept was developed over quite some time and many renditions. I think what was put in the report here was concept K, starting with concept A. So it went through, you know, quite a few iterations to get to this point. I also think it's worth noting that there's seventeen car and trailer spots shown there. And with some, from some correspondence with DNR recently, they would support and be able to fund using grant monies up to eighteen there. That's based off water bodies. There's a, a formula that water bodies based on their size can only have certain number of DNR supported or encouraged or funded boat slips. Or I'm sorry, vehicle and trailer parking spots, depending on the size of the water body. So that's important to note because if, if we were proposing eighteen here and they've only had space to fund four. Then the available money through these grant programs might go down pretty significantly. Yes, Steve?
Question, how many do we have currently there? I believe there's quite a few more than what you're proposing here in the existing.
You know, I'm actually not sure how many like trailer and slip spots there, sorry, sorry, vehicle and trailer spots there are.
Because I know that was one of the concerns we were looking at is trying to get trailers off the Sandy Beach road down there. And just try and, because it gets so congested and you get a truck and a trailer out there, they're basically taking up three parking stalls along the road. So I, I understand the DNR might not want to fund more than seventeen or eighteen.
Sure.
If we presently have twenty-five, we're literally opening up the boat landing to make it easier and better accessible. Why would we cut down on access to?
We have fourteen.
Fourteen, so we're adding three stalls?
Okay, thank you, Steve. And I would add that if, you know, through the process here, people want more than seventeen or eighteen. It's not prohibitive that you could put more in there. They just may decide that, you know, that the cost to add eighteen is this and twenty-five is this, and we're only going to fund this portion.
I just think, because I, my wife and I walk down there a lot. We, we live right on the south side of town. And there are some times you go down there and, you know, half of Sandy Beach is all truck and trailers up and down Sandy Beach. So if we're trying to alleviate some of that, what's our best way to, to do that? Because that's also a safety item, having all them trucks and trailers out there. You're pushing all the park users down the road further.
I, I don't think at any time we're going to get rid of all the.
No, you're not.
Trailers out there. We couldn't, I mean, if you count the number of trailers that they park up that roadway.
Right.
You, you didn't take all the parking at Sandy Beach and make a trailer parking.
Yeah. Within reason, yeah.
Yeah, the real debate is, is, you know, how much do we provide? You know, so like the DNR says, this has to be separate and it has to be controlled to a certain number. Which was already in our proposal, which is still more than what we have. And we have better control accesses and keep them out of the, the swimming area and the, and the other recreational areas. So it, it's not the perfect answer. We're never going to have the perfect answer. You know, right now they, they park all the way up and down the street. They park rotary park full. Any public street in the area that they can get on, they park. So it's, it's going to constantly be an issue. But the DNR is looking more at saying, okay, we're going to try through processes to control how many boats are on the lake at any one time. Because the concept is, is that, you know, the boat, the lake is only big enough to really handle so many boats at one time. So the, the more difficult you make it to access the lake, the more control you have over that. Obviously the public accesses and you can get in and out. But you try and use what you have available to you. And what we're looking at is, is we're going to control, we're going to have better control over it. We're going to separate it out, we're going to get it in the right location. We're going to try and put in a, you know, boat wash and, and clean up some of the items around it. And, and you'll note that there's a huge stormwater device there. It's not a detention basin, but it is a infiltration basin. And so it helps clean up all that pavement that's looking at running out to the lake before it actually hits the lake. So we've, we've tried to incorporate as many concepts into here as we possibly could. In order to make it as good as we possibly can while not, you know, going crazy.
Yeah. I was just hoping to see a few more boat trailer parking stalls if we're going to open that up and make, it is going to be a very nice boat launch at the time. You know, you're going to, you're basically going to make it easier accessible. You're going to draw more boats down there also.
Well, the.
You just are.
Yeah.
It's going to be a good launch now.
Once the parking is used up, you know, then it goes back to, it's not as easily as accessible again. So it.
The challenges to fishermen are out early.
Yeah.
And it pushes the, the people who want to use the beach out further.
Yeah, I, I think we, you know, have to look at a happy compromise between the two. I, you're just not going to be able to. And now I, I have to tell you that the way that this was proposed and the funding was a hundred percent general fund. I didn't propose any grants or anything. So any money that we do bring in as a benefit. Or, you know, if we do charge for parking in here like we proposed to do, that would be a significant benefit too. And then that changes the accessibility concept too. You know, if you're paying more for parking, then, then maybe you're not as readily going to run down to this one and use this one.
And I just want to point out that it's not, there's no, nothing really shown. But the boat wash station we've been talking about tonight would probably be over in here. You know, they would pull out, pull over here, there'd be some sort of washing device here. And this would be sloped to drain back to the lake. So that, you know, it was kind of built into the site that there would be some space for somebody to kind of get out of the way and wash off their, their truck and trailer. So some of the project costs, I don't know what happened there. But some of the project costs, the estimate right now, this was provided in the Mead and Hunt. Report was seven, eight hundred thousand dollars. That was a construction estimate, you know, that there's a range in there because this is only conceptual at this point. The exact timeframe of construction isn't, isn't quite known yet. And then the engineering component of it was about ninety-five thousand, grant assistance, designing, construction, engineering. And, you know, that was again, an estimate from the report. And, but it, you know, it's pretty accurate and I, I think we could see what, what that would turn out to be as we move forward. The funding opportunities are the recreational, the DNR recreational boating grant program, RBF. And then the US Fish and Wildlife Service has a sport fish restoration program as well. To go into some more detail on those, the, the RBF grant, their, their mantra is plan, 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 communication, communication, communication. And I think that it's important to note that that's basically what we're, we've been doing here. That, you know, you went through the process to develop this Sandy Beach redevelopment plan. You know, it was very iterative, you know, went through multiple bodies here at the city. And so, you know, they, they want people to do that so that when you come to them, you have this concept that's not going to change. And partially because they do require a fairly high level of documentation, like engineering plans and permits and stuff. And so they, they need that thing to be planned down to the T before you start thinking about applying. And then the communication part, we did meet with the DNR on November fifteenth. That was myself and some city staff where it went to Fitchburg and met with Cheryl Houseley is the main contact for this program. She had a couple of other DNR staff in there with her. The program funds up to fifty percent of project costs, so that would be three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand for this project. Technically, Rock Lake is eligible for any project to be bumped up to eighty percent because it's over one thousand acres in size. But that has to be deemed to have statewide or regional significance. And so I think the likelihood that the Waterways Commission would feel that way about this project is pretty low. I guess when you compare it to something on Lake Michigan or Lake Mississippi or something like that, you know, it's likely down there in their minds. The June first, two thousand nineteen is the application deadline and very important engineering drawings and DNR permits are required. So this is a much higher level than some other grant programs. When you say apply for the grant, you know, you need to put in quite a bit of effort upfront to be able to apply for that. And that's coming up, you know, fairly fast already. If you were to apply in two thousand nineteen to go from here today, middle of December, to plans and permits in hand by June first. And they act, they definitely encourage you to submit the grant application, all those documents ahead of that so the DNR can kind of comment. They're, they're great to work with on these where they, they basically help you kind of craft the grant application to the, the best that you can. So that they, you know, with all their experience about what gets funded. And, and so you want to leave some review time ahead of that as well. There is a secondary application deadline, November first, two thousand nineteen. But that's more so for whatever funds are left. So it's not very advisable, I guess, to shoot for that deadline because there's going to be less opportunity. August fourteenth, two thousand nineteen is the Waterways Commission presentation. That is a set date that the Waterway Commission is a five-member panel appointed by the governor. One member represents like five distinct regions of the state's waterways. And there is just one dedicated inland waterways. The rest are kind of the more major, superior Michigan, Mississippi, and I think Winnebago. And they basically decide, Strand has done three of these recently with our clients. And you go up there, present, you literally present to a room full of people. And everybody else with projects is sitting over here and they hear your pitch basically. And then the way I understand it is you, everybody leaves the room for lunch and they come back and they say projects A through G get funded and the other three don't. See you later, kind of thing. So it's a little bit of a different process than some grants. But we're very confident that we can, it can do a successful application for the city. Some other things, they, they require a resolution. Basically the city council's support for applying for these, this financial assistance. And then letters of support from basically anybody you can think of. Chambers of Commerce, Joint Rock Lake Committee, specifically state and federal politicians are highly recommended. As I mentioned, these individuals on the committee are appointed by the governor. And if you can show support from as high a level as you can get, state and even federal representatives, that's, that goes a long way. What is going on with these slides? The US Fish and Wildlife Service Sport Fish Restoration Grant is the other one that, it's administered by the DNR. The lady that manages that program is Donna Kempf. It's the same application form as the RBF grant. The big difference is though, up to seventy-five percent of the project costs can be funded. And you can pair it with the Wisconsin DNR RBF funds. We did one recently with Prairie to SAC where with the two programs combined, they were able to fund eighty-seven percent of the project cost. They were, they were very fortunate. They had some good things going for them with the location of the launch and the quality of nearby launches and distances and the popularity of the area and all, all kinds of stuff that is unlikely in most situations. But just an example of, you know, how high you can get by combining these. Importantly though, that February first, two thousand nineteen is the upcoming deadline for that one. And that's a once annual deadline. So, you know, that's coming real quick. But the good news is only concepts and cost estimates are required for that one. And I talked to Donna Kempf and sent her some of these renderings and things that we have and discussed our cost estimates. She said that we would be in good shape to apply with what we have at this point. Again, a resolution is required. It can take up to a year before you know whether the grant is awarded or not. It's a federal grant, so it's not less nimble than the state ones. So you're talking potentially February first, twenty twenty, before you would know what money or if any that you had received. They also highly recommend the letters of support. They do kind of, she told me that ideally you have everything by February first. But if, say that's coming too quickly and we can't get them by then, they can take them kind of as a supplement later. You know, if you've got some in say March or April, it's not too late, kind of thing. And then when I was talking to her, this is important to note for me, this was pretty recently, that she had only heard from one other potential grant applicant. Now, that's not to say that there's not a ton waiting out there in the weeds. But the fact that nobody has reached out to her yet is kind of interesting considering it's only a month and a half away. Which would, if that was the case and there was very few people coming in, your chances obviously go up quite a bit for getting funding. Some other important notes, that applying for these grants this year for the two thousand nineteen cycles means twenty twenty construction at the earliest by the time you receive the grant and ever get the project out for bid and stuff. So, you know, as you're kind of contemplating how you want to approach this, if you were to hit these nineteen deadlines, it's twenty twenty. If you wanted to wait until twenty twenty, it's going to be twenty twenty-one, kind of thing. The application creates an upfront investment from the city that RBF requires plans. And you're probably talking fifty, sixty thousand dollars of design and, and application assistance to kind of get to that point through, say, like next August with the Waterways Commission presentation. In my opinion, the boat launch reconstruction could be standalone. Meaning if you went forward with this and went forward with the boat launch reconstruction project, again, in my opinion, it doesn't lock in council or the city to doing any of the other things in, in the reconstruction plan of the Sandy Beach as a whole. The way that I would see that going is you do the, the boat launch, it's kind of standalone off on the west side. You could remove portions of the existing boat launch and potentially that could be it for a while if, if you so decided. I don't think that this really means you have to do anything else. You know, there would be some impacts to the existing parking lot to get the size of the boat launch facility that we're showing there on the west end of the parking lot. You would also lose your volleyball courts until you rebuilt them someplace. So those would be kind of the two more permanent impacts. There also would be, you'd have to shift the piers around some too, as well. And then the Sandy Beach existing launch could remain open during construction. Even if this is being constructed in the middle of summer, in my opinion, they could kind of just coordinate off so that the main part of the beach and the existing boat launch and everything could stay open. We could also, as a goal, shoot for like more of a shoulder season construction. Where you could, I don't know, say, start after Labor Day or something like that to try and limit the impact to the beach area. Just a couple of thoughts there. Potential schedule. From here today, if you were to want to go forward with specifically this, the record, or the sport fish restoration grant. We would need a resolution authorizing application, probably the first meeting in January. Because we would need to compile that sport fish restoration grant in January to get the DNR to review it and get it in by February first. January to March, you could seek those letters of support. February first would be submit that SR, SFR grant. January to May would be design the boat launch and apply for permits. June first would be the RBF grant deadline. And then August fourteenth is that Waterways Commission presentation. February twenty twenty would be, I mean, it could be earlier, but that would be probably the latest you'd hear about the sport fish restoration award. And then you probably, either way, want to wait until after you had known whether you got that sport fish restoration grant or not to bid the project. Because that is a federal grant and all federal grants come along with all kinds of stuff that you have to put in the contract with wage rates and maybe a project sign or something that you have to put up. And then April to November twenty twenty would probably be your construction. It wouldn't take that whole time. It would be somewhere in that window that you could build the project. Typically these grants come with, you know, windows, you have to use the money. I'm not positive what they are exactly. There's a good potential that you could get these grants and build in twenty twenty-one, but I'm just, I'm not positive. And I, I believe also, Steve, that this scheduled construction in twenty twenty kind of fits with what you had in the budget. So that was what I guess I would kind of propose as a schedule if the council so decided to move forward with the boat launch for a twenty twenty construction. And then on the right there is just a sample resolution from our Prairie to SAC client that was pretty successful with this program. So I guess if the council has any questions, I'd love to.
Yeah, I've got a question.
Yeah.
There, there was a hearing earlier this year, this fall on a neighboring pier that had been modified. Does, has there been any ruling in that?
I'm not familiar with.
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, no, there hasn't been.
Well, will there be any impact on this?
From what we understand, no. Wendy Pike was the one who did the hearing here for that. And she was also. Wendy Pike was the one who did the hearing here for that and she was also the one that was in the grant meeting with us. And we had conversations about that and she didn't she didn't feel it was an issue.
We've already had discussions about relocating the volleyball, right?
Yes, we, the whole package shows relocating all the, it doesn't show relocating everything, but it shows relocating everything that would need to be relocated based on the changes. So, yeah, the volleyball would still be there. There would be places, there would, we'd change how the stormwater was done, you know, some of the bathroom facilities would be changed.
The volleyball would be moved north?
No, east.
East.
Oh, east. Really? Still be on the sand? There's enough room there, huh?
Really.
It's okay.
We dig a hole and fill it with sand, that's what happens.
Go where the existing pavilion is over there on the east beach area, correct?
Yeah, we, the, there are documents that show it all and how it'd be laid out exactly, but the existing pavilion and the existing bathroom would be relocated further to the east and the, the sand volleyball would kind of be between them and the restaurant.
Okay. I just brought it up so that people who are interested in that and play that know that we haven't forgotten about it.
Right, yeah. No, we, we have everything in there that was originally there.
Gotcha. So, don't lose any sleep over it because we.
The only thing that I want to make sure is is that there are no cottages, the one, there are some, you know, the cottages are in the proposal, but we've removed those. So if you read my memos, that that section is out of there.
Right. You look at just keeping that cottage area, just green area then, or?
Well, I think what we look at is, is, you know, maybe taking more advantage of the sand volleyball and some playground area and the pavilion stuff so that, but, yeah, it would be, it would be open in that form.
Now, this, this presentation that you made, is it available on our website?
Yes, multiple times.
Pardon me?
Multiple times.
Okay.
This, I believe this specifically here tonight is not, but the much more detailed presentation that summarizes the meeting hunt report is. That was, I think it was January two thousand and eighteen, the second meeting.
I had it on again and, and I think either the November sixth meeting or the October, yeah, must have been the second meeting in October the sixteenth, if you remember correctly. Yep. So October sixteenth, it's on there.
Now, we are not having a meeting that's on New Year's Day. But that moves us to the third week of January. Would we have to have a special meeting before that or can we just get all our ducks in a row and do everything we need on that meeting to hit these deadlines?
The third week in January would be cutting it pretty close. You're basically saying canceling entirely the first meeting, it's just, it's not moving.
Right, it's on January.
Yeah, that would, we can make it work. The the application, the Sport Fish Restoration application is, you know, four or five pages and you have to attach some cost estimates and stuff. But if you're going to get those letters of support, you know, wait till the council formally recommends going forward with it to pursue those letters of support, you know, you would definitely have to add them as a supplement, I would think, unless people are really on the ball to get them to you.
And obviously, if we're in support of this, we're going to do our letters of, that we have to do, we'll do that on that, that third meeting, third week.
Resolution.
Resolution, thank you.
Yeah, the resolution.
Yeah, so we would do that and get that done. I mean, that should go bang, bang, bang.
Yeah, I think it's definitely possible. Yep, yep.
Steve, do you have any concerns about that kind of timeline? Are we going to be okay to do that?
Well, the second meeting in January is the fifteenth.
Yes.
And so I anticipate we're going to have a certain amount of work done before that date.
And and we'll just pass it that night.
Right.
But the work is going to have to be done before that.
Right, just as long as you realize that we're going to be working on it.
Before we officially told you to do it. But I think, you know, unless somebody here tonight says, I think this is a really dumb idea, we have no reason to slow it down. And if we could get like that federal grant, that would be really nice. I mean, you can't, you wouldn't know until you try. And anything is better than nothing, which is what we have now.
Yeah, and I would add that, you know, again, I'm very confident that we can do this successfully for the city to get some money. Hard to say how much exactly, but, you know, if you did go through to apply for that recreational boating facilities grant, you know, you would have the facility designed at least most of the way that, you know, whether you tried to pursue it again the next year, you know, that that investment in the, in designing the facility doesn't, it's not a one-time shot, you know, you would have it kind of on the shelf until needed.
What do you need from us tonight? Well, we don't have anything. We can't, it's a discussion item only. So everything would have to wait till that second, third meeting, third week of January.
Right, I guess the ask for me would be to just put it on the agenda to do the resolution to apply for these grants and.
Yeah, we're good to take it, yeah.
Okay.
And by consensus, we're saying move forward with this until we pass the resolution?
Well, if somebody doesn't like it, please tell us now. Kind of like a wedding. Say something or shut up.
The federal grant doesn't require all the design to be done, right?
No, I very specifically.
So the cost is minimal?
Right, the February first application is very minimal. I had sent the, that lady some of these renderings. She said, yeah, this is quite a bit farther along and more detailed than a lot of what she receives. So she was, seemed impressed with what we could submit pretty easily to her.
Did you already, did you say that you've already met with Joint Rock Lake Committee about this?
No, I happen to be at a meeting, I presented on the Milpon study that we did and a gentleman just happened to come to say, hey, can you please try to do something about the launch? It wasn't on the agenda, it wasn't really planned, he just kind of public comment type visit.
There's also the Rock Lake Improvement Association, so are you looking for letters of support from both or one or the other?
Absolutely. The more the merrier, any, I mean, Main Street, Chamber of Commerce, you know, definitely the representatives is a, is a big recommendation, including federal, if you can. But any, yeah, anybody that has any sort of interest in the lake, the economy, I don't know if there's any park user groups or anything like that, you know, really the more the merrier for the letters of support.
So, yeah, it sounds like, or it looks like we have some question, or some comments out there, so I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules to allow, at least hope to come up and say our piece.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Congress. Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Thank you.
Okay.
I appreciate you spending, suspending the rules. I see Tim has already made some comments tonight. My name is Hope Oseig, I do live in the town of Lake Mills, not in the city. I do feel that, I keep hearing the word "we." Seems like there's been a lot of work done on this concept, but not much of it has seen public light. And I think that there is a very important component missing here, and that is public input on what is actually planned for Sandy Beach. It seems to me we're pushing a timeline of grants and that there needs to be a heck of a lot more public input before you're ready to present these grants, either to the federal government or the state government. And those are my comments. I just think we need to have more public input, more design concepts, more discussion, and more true representative discussion from the people of this city and the town that serve and live around Rock Lake. Thank you.
So more than the year that we've already put in with our public meetings?
As far as I'm concerned, as far as I'm concerned, I have never been, as the town chairman, invited to a public meeting, maybe I've missed something. I attend regularly both the Joint Rock Lake Committee and the, and the IRLA meetings, and I have never heard or seen this gentleman present anything at those concept, of these concepts there. We have had a very controversial issue on Sandy Beach Road with the Pie Pier. And as you said, Doug, none of those decisions have really come forward yet. I don't think any of that has been presented or a decision has been made. Think that makes, it makes an influence on these decisions. I understand the grant process, I understand the planning process. If there's anything I've learned from these processes, it is that you need to have some very good planning done, design work, and public input before you're going to be successful. And I think that's the component that's missing here is the public input. You may say that you've worked on this since last January, but I don't think this is really seeing the light of day. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I would disagree.
Before you go, we have, since we suspended the rules, we get to ask too.
I guess these, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, this has been on the cable?
Well, we've, we've done.
Presented a couple of times.
We've done four presentations and there have been at least seven memos and, but, so we've, we've made it available on our site and through our meetings multiple times. The, we haven't really done a design yet, we've done a concept. So, I mean, we're, you know, there, there's a lot of difference between the two, I think that's what Brandon was talking about, is we're a long way from the one grant that's due in June. The conceptual one gives us a lot more time to start designing and going through the, those types of, of discussions. Right now, we're looking at it from the standpoint of, of, well, conceptually, this is the location and this is how we're going to do it. I mean, if you were looking at it and saying, this is exactly the way it's going to be built, I wouldn't say that. So if you were looking to have input on something, what would it be?
I've never been invited to a meeting or knew about a meeting, other than the first meeting I was at here last January where the concept was introduced. Just saying.
The document is out there and I haven't gotten any comments.
You've never been to either one of these bodies that we effectively give authority to over our lake. I don't, I don't understand why there hasn't been some communication there. And I know you're doing your own parks planning. I didn't come here to refute what you have done. I'm saying that I think you need to have more public comment. Tonight, you had to suspend the rules so I could make a comment. Sorry, I think you're missing the point. I'd like to see more people involved in this decision. It affects all of us.
I think you're missing the point also. We've had multiple open sessions and it's not our fault if you haven't been paying attention and listening to it.
I accept that. I do think that you need to have some more input, need to have some more design input before you're ready to apply for these grants. That's my opinion.
I don't agree, but thank you.
I, I will say that I, I'm not opposed to that. I mean, he's right, we went through a lot of iterations and, but it was all staff and and city council. So from that standpoint, it, well, it hasn't, we put it out there before, in the public meetings, people haven't participated. So what you look at from the point of where and when and how you do it, I guess I, I would debate, but, you know, Todd's asked a couple of times and I'm not, I think that's a legitimate argument when we, so, you know, this tonight was a kind of the first start, but kind of, we, we get rushed, you know, everything starts hitting a timeline and I'm not, I'm not opposed to those concepts, you know, you look at it and I hear, you know, someone talk about the trees, yeah. If we did this concept, we, exactly as it's proposed, there's some pretty damn nice trees out there that would go.
Yeah, the thing that people also have to remember is they've elected the people to sit up here to represent them and not to be involved in every single decision that's out there. And that's why we're here. We're here to represent them because they voted for us. If we waited and took account for every single person in every meeting and made sure everybody knew every single meeting was here, we would never get anything done. They know they can contact us on any day. They can call us on our phone, they can email us, they can get ahold of us any way they want to, any day of the week. So to say that, that nobody's talked about this is just a slap in the face.
All right, I'd just like to show you, tonight I have a folder that was given to me by a friend, has clippings from the nineteen eighty-eight, nineteen eighty-nine discussion that this very council had. There's a folder full of clippings. And the one thing that was brought forward at that time when Sandy Beach was looking to be redesigned was public input. And I'm just saying, I just don't think you've had enough time to put forward enough energy, enough presentation, enough modeling to say that you have the support of the public in this particular redesign. This is not the first time this has been looked at.
Then they would be here, they would be calling us. They would be contacting us. And I hope they do. If they have problems with us, with this, you call us, you contact us.
Well, I, I think there's time to do probably multiple outreaches to Joint Rock Lake and Rock Lake Improvement Association as well as public hearings on the concept that, or the design before it is cast in stone. The federal grant is, my understanding, we've already done the work that needs to be done in order to apply for the federal grant. You don't have to do any actual construction plans or, or finite designs. It's the grant coming up in the summertime that you need that for, right?
Correct, yeah. And I think that's a very important note is that, and like Steve said, that this is a concept and I think that the federal grant would be like, okay, you're building a boat launch of this relative size in this space, you're not going to switch it to the other side of the beach or something like that, you know, that's the kind of detail that, that they're worried about. And things like the trees, you know, yeah, that you can, those are the design process and, and concepts that could be brought forward is, you know, you could do three, four, or five different concepts of, of how the traffic would flow and the parking would be laid out and where the stormwater basins would be and all that stuff kind of in this space. You know, this is just kind of a, the concept level is we will, the boat launch is thought to be reconstructed in this area of this approximate size, boat trailer, parking stalls, things like that. I think from, if, in my opinion, there's still plenty of time to run through concepts of reconstructing the boat launch and still meet the grant deadlines. You know, if you're talking more grand public input on the concept as a whole for Sandy Beach Park in general, you know, that's a whole different story.
Yeah, you, while you, in your strategic planning session said that Sandy Beach was a priority, even at the last meeting we had in October, you know, it was like, we haven't approved anything, we're not doing anything, it's in the budget, but it's on a year where it's, doesn't guarantee anything. Well, we're not stepping out, because when we do this, the more public input, the more cost. So we're not stepping out and taking a concept that's still pretty rough and running it to a point where, you know, you read that one document I sent on the Austin's Code thing, you could have it out there for years and never get it to the point where you even finish it, and spend a ton of money. And so at what point, staff isn't going to step out and say, "Hey, we're going to run a bunch of public hearings on a concept that the council hasn't put up there yet." So if you guys at that resolution meeting say, "This is what we're putting out there," and then we start to design, we'll start running some, some of that, but at this point in time, it's, from a staff perspective, we haven't been directed and, and we've been told that there's nothing approved, so we're not spending any money until, until such a point as we get that.
Yep, that's exactly right, and we can't spend any money until we put in for grants So if we don't start the process somewhere, which is what we're doing right now, we'll be sitting here twiddling our thumbs for two, three years and we'll never get anything. So that's the point that we're at.
I do see this as a good conceptual design, but I mean, even, we've asked some good questions here.
Putting it on the west end is the right design. I, I don't have any, I, I believe fully that putting the pier on the west end is the right idea. Conceptually, you know, we have to do stormwater, when you look at the stormwater, they got a good idea about how to handle the stormwater, they got good traffic flows, they've isolated it from the rest of the beach. So all those concepts are good ideas. That's what, if you read the DNR documents, everything that they want is incorporated into this here. So from that standpoint, I would say, yeah, this, this is a, a concept that meets all the requirements that everyone would be looking for. From a final design standpoint, you're going to do soil borings, you're going to go do, you're going to do a whole bunch of other testing, you're going to, you're going to have to look at all kinds of issues that are out there that engineers look at, and then they're going to come back and say, "These are the options that we have." You know, they'll go out there and they'll survey every tree and they'll survey everything that's out there, and we'll start looking at the actual distances of driveways and how they tie into what's there now and what'll be proposed, and, but again, that's a lot of money to spend without having a, yes, we're going forward.
I think what we do have is a really good conceptual design. We did talk about the financing, whether it's self-funding or general funds. I mean, there's still some other issues in some of the actual hard design we need to walk through. We've talked about a lot of different things in work sessions and never said this was the plan. I mean, I don't think anybody here came up and said, "This is the plan." Yeah, we definitely need to move forward with something, but I think there's going to be opportunity for people to speak up some, but we still need to, there's still a lot of work we need to do on this, moving forward.
Yeah, there's a, I mean, you move from conceptual to harder, once you start saying, "Okay, this is what we really physically can do," which takes a lot more surveying than what's been done to this date.
Because even this plan here, we've tweaked it already saying we're not interested in the cabins. So there's space on that east end that maybe we take this whole design and tweak it a little bit because we freed up some space down there. Maybe it makes some sense to do some things, you know? So, I mean, this was a great idea. I just don't think we're 100% there yet.
No, but we have enough to start working on.
To start the movement.
And that's what this was for.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if, if we have to expand the timeline, we have, have to expand the timeline for public input and those types of things. But I think getting the grants going is important and that.
Right. I know I've had a lot of people ask me about it, wondering when we're going to start getting some more input and see what the final design is. We've presented this as a good conceptual design. People are interested to see where it's going to go.
We're interested to see where it's going to go.
And tonight's discussion on the boat launch, when you pointed out that if that's the component that we go with, that doesn't obligate us to do any of the rest of the Sandy Beach redevelopment plan as proposed by Meaden Hunt. So our options are still open. But what I would like us to do is, I would think that on our website, we could have a link on the front page of the website, so when somebody wants to research what's going on with this, they could be, then pull up the memos and the report that was given by Meaden Hunt, and maybe even Dave can do a link there to the portion of televised meetings where it's been discussed, so that somebody could research the whole gamut of the information prior to us doing a public hearing or presentations to the, the Rock Lake Committee or, or Rock Lake Improvement Association, so that people, more people have information before they're just presented with it. You know, a blanket, "This is what we're thinking about doing, what do you think?" And it gives people opportunity to digest it, talk about it, and then come to a meeting. Just a suggestion.
And I'd just like to add that, I think we, as the council and the staff, have advertised that we are considering it, we are thinking about it, and for people to just, our citizens to just sit there, if they have a concern, they need to take and start talking to us and start expressing their ideas to us so that we're aware of them, not to wait until the final proposal is done and then comment on them. Now is the time. And we have been talking about this, and it has been publicized for the last year, and that we are talking about it, and to wait, I think is an injustice to us who are trying to plan it. Now is the time to talk to us and to explain their side of whatever ideas they've got. That's what we're here for.
I, I think that discussion that we had at the last meeting about the Sandy Beach Mobile Home Park could also be included in whatever linkage that you can do, because that's part of the picture, so that people can understand that it's a very complicated process that we're trying to work our way through.
Yeah, that conversation alone was highly frustrating to me as far as the information that's actually out there, because, you know, they, they were debating, "Well, how's this going to be paid for?" Well, you all approved the budget. It was in the budget, it's all general fund. There's, we would do it like developers, the general fund would build it, then we would donate it to the water company, and then they would maintain it. We don't think we need easements on land we own unless we were planning to sell it, so at some point in time, we might do that, but I don't see that happening in the near future. So all the, all the concepts that I see and know aren't necessarily even communicated well down through the staff. So I, I, I'm sure that there are a lot of questions. In my mind, it's, these are the steps that have to happen, and I've got 10 years of steps in place in my mind already on how it's going to happen, but it, it doesn't always translate well to everybody else. Because there's, there's so many, it's so complex. There's so many, all the financing and all the different methods for paying for it and all the different steps and, you know, are we going to do it, you know, as a wintertime project, or is we going to do it as a summertime project? And then who does it impact and who does it not impact? There, there are just so many things, I, sometimes I, I think it's all being communicated clearly across all the departments, but even they aren't fully comprehending all of it.
Well, it's a big project.
It is, it's a big project.
But this is just one aspect of it.
Yeah, this is probably the simplest aspect of the whole project.
But it officially opens a can of worms.
It officially opens a can of worms once we start, because you're going to have designs now.
Right.
Whether they're on the shelf or not, you're going to have a design.
Well, I think we're up to the job. I think we made it really clear tonight, if somebody's got something they want to say, they need to say it. They can either write it to us, they can call us, they can come to the meeting and speak at the beginning of our meetings, they're open to the public, you don't have to pre-register unless you don't live in this, if you, if the agenda, if it's not on the agenda, then you just need to get here about 10 to 7 and tell the clerk that you want to speak at the meeting, and she'll tell you what we, what you need, which would be your name and your address and what you want to speak about, and then you can speak at the meeting, even if it's not on the agenda. It's, we have, you know, really an open thing, so, yeah, if you have things to say, please come and say them. What do you think, Cooper, of this process? Hey, you know, you just sat down here. Were you surprised by what you heard tonight?
Sure, so what I'm getting so far is right now, we're in the process, we want to apply for grants, right? So this is the concept, in the end, we want to build the new boat launch, right?
That would be the direction we would be heading.
This is the direction we want to be going.
Yeah.
So the first step to that is applying to these grants, which I think is what we want to start doing, right? Are you agreeing to that?
That's what we've been directed to do, right.
So that, that's the first step, and regardless of whether this is, this project is what we end up going through with, I think the start is good and whatever we end up with, with public discussion and whatnot, the first step is the grants, and that's what we can roll with.
Yeah.
And the grants will give us parameters that we then have to work within.
Right.
Like you said, they may, they may give us, you know, from here to there, that we can put this in. They won't set, tell us, "It's got to be in this spot." Is that kind of what you were saying, for the federal one at least?
Um, yeah, generally, I mean, it's just that if you submit a concept here, they don't want to see, "Okay, thanks for the money, we're going to move it 500 yards that way now." You know, they, they just want to see at least something that's pretty close to what you eventually end up building. And like Steve was saying, you know, this is, this is a concept, definitely the west end is the right place to put it. There's tons of things that could be tweaked in terms of shifting it east or west, or, you know, what is the orientation of the parking lot exactly relative to the shoreline, things like that. You know, you could even identify trees that you want to try and save and put those in parking lot islands, or move the whole site around to try and avoid a couple of the, the bigger, older ones, you know, things like that that are, you know, if the public comes forward and says, "We really want to keep as many trees as possible," you know, great, you could try to work that in. I mean, Steve, you know, did accurately say though that, you know, the more concepts you work through, the more time it takes, the more money the city spends, things like that, but you definitely don't want to avoid, you know, what the public really wants to see kept on this site. I mean, I, if in terms of the trees, there are some beautiful trees down there that if you can keep them, it would be great. If you're putting in a large expanse of asphalt here, which is kind of what you want for a nice boat launch, you're going to lose some of them, but, you know, you can try to tweak it some to keep as many as you can.
Some of the parameters though are like, how many parking spaces we can have for boats.
Right.
You know, if all we're going to have is 17 or 18, that's what we're going to shoot for, and if we decide as a council that you want to add more boat parking, then we, then we know we're not going to do a grant. So those are some of the parameters you're living within.
Okay, well, this will be on our agenda for the first meeting in January, which is the third Tuesday in January. That much we know for sure, and under our next agenda item, when we get there, we can talk more. So does anybody else have something to speak on this agenda item? I'm seeing them. Thank you so much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you in the audience for being here tonight, and if you are walking out the door tonight with something that you think is, hey, they haven't thought of this, please contact us, okay? Contact Steve, he'll listen, and contact whatever, but don't go home and just say, "Well, I don't like it," but don't tell anybody what you don't like, because you can't get it changed if you don't like it, if you don't tell us, so. All right, moving on to item nine, nine, recommendation for future agendas. Now, we talked earlier in the meeting about some agendas items. Steve, what was it?
City Chair.
City Chat, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's what it was, thank you. Yeah, we are, we're, we're not going to have the January 8:30 in the morning city chat. We had a much nicer day in this, was it December or November?
November.
And two people showed up. So what we have decided is that we can probably reach more people by doing something like people calling, and we'll give you more information next meeting probably. Should we put that on as an agenda item to make sure everybody knows what to do?
Sure.
And it should show up on our website soon. I didn't get to talk to Dave, did you talk to Dave?
Okay.
I didn't either, sorry. But anyway, what we were thinking about doing is having people will make, learn how to bring their ideas. We will get the ideas together, we will get the staff and what we can, we can't have the whole council there because then we have a quorum and we have to have a meeting and everything, but we can have up to two council members there. And then that will be broadcasted on cable and the website and so forth. Now, Steve, what did I just leave out, because I did a crummy job of explaining that?
Well, we're going to try and get people to ask questions, so you said their ideas, but submit questions that they want to know about, and then we can answer them. We'll record the meeting. Yeah, it won't actually be live, but we'll record it and then we'll broadcast it to, as a city chat, so that any questions they have, they can get answered and it'll be on the internet.
Including ones about Sandy Beach could be, you know? We're going to try this new way and see if we can get a better participation of people in the city, and maybe we will, maybe we won't, but more than two wouldn't be hard to beat. So I mean, we had more people on staff and council than we did in the audience, so. Okay, so we'll get back to that on the next agenda item, but there will not be a regular one in January. And nobody wants to get up at 8:30 in the morning in January anyway, it's cold and yucky out.
It's dark.
Yeah, so, anyway. We obviously have already said this, Sandy Beach will be on our January 15th, is it? 15th meeting, so that will be on the agenda. We have second reading for the solid waste on that agenda. And then we're going to be scheduling a meeting the last Tuesday of the month in January as a work session on the branding and whatever else goes with that.
Yep, it'll be just branding this time.
Just branding, okay. But, and you'll by then have the answer to?
Yep.
The paints and things like that, that we, we want to know that information.
Do we know if that's going to be at 7 or 6, or do we, did we decide that's time?
That's time 7.
Yeah, whatever works for everybody else.
Well, it's, it's January. I don't like January, can you tell? Okay, I think 7 is better than 6, but if you all want 6, we'll do 6.
I don't care.
7, okay? 7 o'clock. Okay, it's a work session, I think it's here. Anything, do we have to add anything? No? Okay. And if there's something else that we didn't think of, we'll call Steve and, or Dan and try to put on the agenda. All right? Okay, I guess I can use this now. Maybe I should- guess I can use this now. Maybe I should pass it over a little?
No.
Okay. Meeting adjourned.